Moving on to the public hearing, I'll ask Carol to read the notice.
Legal notices hereby given pursuant to Section 20 of the Municipal and Local Law of the State of New York in pursuant to a resolution of the Town Board of the town of Lewiston, the said Town Board will hold a public hearing at the Town Hall 1375 Ridge Road, Town Lewiston, on the 13th day of November 2017 at 6:00 PM to hear all interested parties and citizens regarding the adoption of a local law for the amendment of a pre-existing planned unit development concept plan, property located on Upper Mountain Road, SVL number 102-00-1-14.1. This property is presently owned by Donald Smith. Further information including access to the full text of the proposed local law and a copy of said amended planned unit development concept plan may be obtained at the office of the Town Clerk, Ridge Road, Lewiston, New York by order of the Town Board, October 23rd, 2017.
I'm going to butcher this last name unless Bill from 864 Junestrike. Oh, okay. Go ahead, Bill. I'm Justin. Bill Justing. Now that I see, I know who it is.
Well, thank you very much for letting me speak. I'm very, I love this project. They are a good builder. They come highly recommended from Peter Hunt. Everybody knows Peter Hunt. I talked to him personally three or four months ago, and he says they build houses in Clarence and stuff like that, and he never had a problem or complaint from these people. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Margaret Domeno, 5099 Bronson Drive.
So the Rubinos don't own the property? It's still owned by Don Smith? Is that correct?
Yes.
Let's clarify that. This is signed and notarized petition from surrounding neighbors opposing this project. Can I bring it to you?
Sure. Should I? Yes, go ahead. Bring it to me, and I'll file over to the Town Clerk tomorrow. Can I keep it this time? Okay.
I just have a few things. Has anybody, have any of you gone on the Rubino website? Nobody? No one? Okay. I did. On their website, for over 34 years, they've been selling real estate. They only began building homes in 1991. In 2003, they completed a 29-home subdivision in Clarence. They built Campbell Meadows, which was, I believe that one's the 44 homes. And that was back in 2014. Oh, no, I'm sorry. That one's not 44 homes. That one's eight four-unit complexes. And then, that's Campbell Meadows. Amber Meadows is 44 patio homes. Unless they just haven't bothered, I'm sorry, is there something you guys needed to take care of?
I'm looking at your petition.
Oh, okay. Unless they haven't updated their website, they have never done, built anything of this magnitude. And, you know, I'm just wondering, can they really handle it with all these things that they have, you know, facing us? Also, I don't know if anybody else noticed, but at the meeting when Mr. Guydon was absent, so were the Rubinos. I wonder why? You guys already knew you were going to table it, and somebody informed them from within Also, at the meeting that Ms. Reddell was absent, and Mr. Bass said he needed more time to review. It was also stated that we only had a 61-day timeframe, but apparently Mr. Catalano had talked to the Rubinos. Well, I never saw him get up from that chair to talk to the Rubinos. So apparently, that was pre-planned as well. I'm just wondering, do you guys work for us, or do you work for the Rubinos? That's all. And another thing, oh, a couple meetings, it's been stated that, you know, we're worried about a possible lawsuit by the Rubinos. Well, according to Mr. Catalano, they have a pre-approved plan. They have a plan that's been approved, and they could start building tomorrow. So I don't understand where the worry of a lawsuit comes in. It's just a couple things to consider. And that's all I hear.
Thank you, Ms. Domeno. I'm sorry. James Di, I came from Diogadae?
Diogadae.
Diogadae?
I'm hearing concern of my water.
Oh, no, that wouldn't be the public hearing. That wouldn't be the public hearing for the...
They told me to come tonight, the board meeting.
You can speak. It's just after the... This is a public hearing for the planned unit development up on Upper Mountain and Bronson Drive.
The southern end of Bronson.
Yeah. So that's what the public hearing for there. At the end, we have a privilege of the floor. I'll move your name down there.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Sure.
Okay, that is all that has signed up for the public hearing. Is there anybody else that would like to be heard? Okay. I'll start back here in the back. I'm sorry.
My name is Jared Whitten. I'm an elder at Niagara Frontier Bible Church. We shared a, we sent a letter to the Rubinos. I just wanted to share it to council. So it's addressed to John and Joe Rubino. "We, the leadership of Niagara Frontier Bible Church, are excited to hear the possibility of new neighbors coming with the development of property adjacent to the church. Our mission at NFBC is on mission with God to produce fully devoted followers of Christ. These new residents, along with current residents at Upper Mountain, are always welcome to worship with us. Thank you for the time to review our concerns with current playground that is on our property that we are leasing to the municipality of Lewiston. Your creative solution to donate the land to the church to help rebuild the playground to provide public walking access has been a sign of praise for the body of believers at NFBC. This short note is our show of support for the development of Upper Mountain property adjacent to Niagara Frontier Bible Church. How blessed, the leadership of NFBC." Would you like a copy of that?
Sure. Thank you very much, Mr. Whitten. Ma'am?
Carol, I'm Carol Sheikin of 5080 Bronson Drive.
I'm sorry, what was your address?
5080, 5-0-8-0 Bronson Drive. Lived there 50 years. I also worked on the petition for the, and just to keep it so that it would be a good development that went in there. Did I understand correctly that you can't find the minutes for the night that the picture that we see of the map? All of that was approved, that the PUD was approved? It seems to me when I come to the meetings, you've said you can't find the minutes of that. Because if we have minutes of all of these meetings here, why don't we have a set of the minutes so we can see what went through, how it went through, and not just the picture? That's in records, isn't it?
I believe the people that said we didn't have the minutes were from that side.
I was told that they should...
Hold on, hold on, one side, one side. Tim?
We have all the minutes here.
Yeah, we have all the minutes here.
Can we have copies of the minutes?
Oh, you got to do it last month.
Yep.
That wasn't told to us before. We were told, if I believe correctly, we were told that they weren't available.
I'm going to tell them.
You can have them from the legal department.
Yeah. You have to go through Tim Masters, and he's here in the morning, so you can get a copy of it in the morning.
Because I believe several people have asked for the minutes before, and we were told that they have the map, but not the actual minutes that says that everything that was stated and the way it was stated that had developed was to go through.
Okay. The Town Clerk has a whole folder, so she can see that.
Well, why wouldn't they permit it? If this is something going through, why weren't they, you showed the map? Why wasn't all that presented to the residents that have come forward with questions?
I'm talking about the minutes that said that that went through as a PUD approved by everything and all the things that were supposed to be there. They said that it was not 1985. They did say 1985, they did not, they did not have them. They said from 1985, they did not have them.
I know that. I'm not the only, my hearing, my memory is very good. Guydon was one of my kids, a long time ago.
Yeah. Does that have extra copy?
That's, yes, yeah. I mean, there had to be a lot of minutes that told about that project, because I came to a lot of meetings.
Well, that's, the minutes he bringing right now have, that's the approval.
Was it approved by the planning board? Does it tell anything?
That's the Town Board.
Yeah.
I think it was August 6th.
This is July 30th, July 30th, 1984.
Carol, it was when the planning board, they sent that.
Right. We were told that there was no meetings, and we were going on...
I don't know who...
Something that we were told.
Yeah. I don't know who told you.
I'm going to do that.
Okay. Thank you. And who else would like to speak, sir?
Ladies and gentlemen, members of the board, my name is Tracy McLavity. I've been asked to speak up because I don't speak very loudly.
Address?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Your address?
4632 Creek Road. It's a good thing you asked, because I know that there are people who come to these meetings who live in Wilson, and shouldn't be here at all.
William Wilson.
Go ahead. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I haven't pinned myself to this particular development, but I've noticed this. I've noticed it because it's within my interests, not just my personal interests, but my interest in my property, which is right there on the border. And I've listened for a long time to a lot of complaints, and I've heard some people say, "It's a good thing." I'm always trying to find the reasons behind that. Why is it not a good thing? And why is it a good thing? Because I judge things that way personally. And this has been going on for a long, long time, and I have yet in all of my attention to hear one single argument against the development that holds any substance whatsoever. Don't tell me about your children and your dogs and the rest of it. These things are taken care of in the planning processes, which I understand took place in 1985. Somebody sat down and thought about it. Somebody sat down and did the road engineering. Somebody sat down and did everything else that you do when you do a development. Since that time coming forward, that development has been sitting there, waiting to get going. Now, I have been involved with Mr. Smith, the original developer, because I was on the board of home, of the settlement development with him. And I know what he did, and I know why he did it, and I know what the previous, these partners did and all of that, because I went into it. One of the biggest threats they faced from the day they got their PUD was the fact that people don't want development in their backyards, even to the extent that they'd rather hunt on somebody's private property than watch it grow. Now, I'm a taxpayer in this town, and I expect, and ladies and gentlemen of the audience, please excuse me, if you think I'm talking to you, I hope you listen, but I'm actually talking to the board. I know how these things work. I've been a developer, I've gone right through the mill, and I think we've gone a long way on this particular development. But it's beginning to look like something like a shakedown. How much will you give us if we let you? They've given quite a lot. I'm told recently, not by them, because I don't communicate with them, I communicate with people who do. I've been told that they've made further concessions and further grants, et cetera. Well, I think it's about time that this decision was made on the basis of its merits. And if it's not good enough, it shouldn't happen. And if it is, it should. Now, there are people out there with expert opinions, and there are people out there with private opinions. We all know what happens in a court case, which was discussed in this meeting this tonight, that considered in court cases. Everybody does that, including the people who are against it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Would anybody else like to speak?
Amy Wilson, 5065 Bronson Drive, in rebuttal, sir. Were you not the one that proudly stated that you moved to Deboe, bought a house in Niagara Falls?
Actually, madam, no, I did not state that. You're doing what everyone else does, you're listening to what you want to hear.
No, hold on, hold on. Go ahead and speak your piece. We're not going to get into a discussion. We're not going to get into a discussion.
And my piece is, we that live there are not against development. Our own homes were part of the development. We understand progress. What we don't like is being railroaded. And I think that's what's actually happening here. We were there at that July 3 of 1984 meeting. We had just bought our home from my in-laws, who built the home. So we know what's been going on since the 50s. The lots were supposed to be 100 by 200. That's fine. When they stalled, it was like, okay, the guy ran out of money. It happens. It's not that we're against any development. We're against 66-foot lots. People, the homes are 10 feet apart when you've got that. That's, that's insane. That's city living. And that's going to force people out. You're going to actually lose a bath space. You're not going to gain one, if that's what you're looking at, if you're looking at finances. I would appreciate if people who bail on the town of Lewiston really don't have much of a, a voice anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Would anybody else like to speak? Go ahead, sir.
Don Anderson, A.A., for the circle. And to me, this is a very simple issue. This is not about the Rubino brothers being good builders, good guys. It's not about progress. Development is good at times. To me, this is simply a public safety issue. Bronson cannot handle construction trucks. The reason why the original PUD was passed in the 80s was because there was an access road off of Upper Mountain for all the heavy construction trucks and to handle all the additional traffic. So to me, there's a simple solution that could make everybody happy, build the access road off of Upper Mountain first, and keep our community and our neighborhood safe. Because our dogs, our children, our bikers, everybody who walks up and down Bronson are important, sir. Nobody wants to see a little kid underneath a back loader. And that, very well for that. Just build the access road off of Upper Mountain first, and I will go door-to-door and support that, this project if that happens.
Thank you, sir. Okay, would anybody else want to speak? Can I get a motion? Oh, go ahead.
Okay. Been up here before, Sharon Pfeiffer, 5123 Bronson Drive. I know, you know my feelings on this project. My parents have a double lot. That would mean two and a half homes behind her, in her backyard. Now, if this plan goes forward, I wish that we could add another 10 feet or so between a green space or something between the end of 5123 Bronson Drive at the backyard and the beginning of the other backyard. I've been told by a Realtor friend of mine, I might look into a term called adverse possession. I don't know. I'm not a lawyer, but others here may want to look at it, too. What it states basically, in my limited knowledge, is if you have been using the property, which my parents have, that Wally Mall was gracious enough to say, "Yes, you may go on, go ahead and use the property beyond your limits," and, and my parents did. They used it for gardening, wood piles. And that's, all it amounts to is probably about 10 additional feet. But I'm going to look into adverse possession, because what it basically states is, in New York State, if you have been using that property for over 10 years, it can actually become yours. And that's, that's what I get off of the Google search, and that's what my Realtor friend said. And if other people are like me, have used some of Mr. Mall's property beyond the property lines, it might be something that you might want to look into. I know I will be looking into it.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Can I get a motion to close public hearing? Motion to close public hearing. Second, second. All in favor? Aye. Okay, moving into the work session, I'd like to get the agenda approval. Is there any additions to our agenda? With motion.
We had a discussion about the new eight-family medical leave act that years they passed, and I don't think we have anything to hold on to tonight by honor of the board knowing the issue.
Can we use the microphone, please?
I just want to let the board know about an issue that goes along with that for municipalities, and that at the next board meeting, I would anticipate that action needs to be taken either way.
Okay. Is it for a public meeting, or?
It would be at our public meeting. The action needs to be taken by December 1st, so we're safe if we...
As the open agenda?
Yeah.
Move to approve the agenda as amended. Motion second. All in favor? Aye. Moving on to the local law, the proposed local law for the amendment of a PUD concept plan. Now, my understanding is that this just converts what's already on the books to the current proposed plan, right? So this is just putting the process that we have going on right now...
That was started in 1984 to now.
It conforms to what's going on now to the 1982. I make a motion to approve...
Well, we have to go through a couple of steps before we get to that point.
Okay.
We need to declare ourselves as lead agency in regard. All of our notices were sent out. None of the agencies out, or towns replied, so by that occurring, we can declare ourselves the lead agency.
Okay.
Proceed. Thank you. So we need a resolution for that first, to declare us as the lead agency.
So where does, where does, where does this fit into the process? Just so I'm clear.
That will be the last thing we do.
This, this is the law that approves the concept plan?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So I thought this was just basically amending the prior law to allow this process to go forward pursuant to our code, but this is actually approving the concept plan?
Correct. Yes.
So what are we on the agenda for? We're an old business, Upper Mountain Road PUD Council.
We're here.
Okay, so, but this, that's what I'm saying, any one renders the other moot. I want to make sure we know what we're voting on. So we should be removing the upper, and the old business, right?
Mr. Supervisor, before we move ahead, may I ask Mr. Conrad a question? Am I correct that the concept is approved? Everything that has been said in each one of these public hearings is taken under advisement by the planning board while they're going to the next step down the way?
Absolutely.
And incorporate it?
Yes.
Yeah. And I guess that's what's paining me at this point, because I'm one of the last speakers, and I'm sorry, Mr. Anderson had raised a concern that I have, which is the safety issue. And we've, we've tried to address it in a number of different ways through the developer, possibly putting in a sidewalk, and those things, but the funding for that would come from a different source and would not be controlled by the developer. So it's kind of a little bit awkward at this stage to dovetail everything together into a single vote. So I want to make sure that we know what we're voting on as we're going forward. That's all.
No, every, every review that's done by any other agency is...
Microphone.
What the planning, what the planning board has done and will continue to do is take every comment from the other agencies that have reviewed, including the Town Board, and incorporate that into our review, and moving forward, trying to, you know, pinpoint the answers and resolutions to the issues that have arisen out of this process. So moving forward, whichever way the board goes, if this does move forward tonight, then we can start developing more answers, or the Rubinos can start developing more answers, more detailed answers on the issues that really have been able to have been finalized until we move to the next phase.
Does that include setbacks?
Well...
In green space?
There's going to be, right, a lot of the detail that's been missing so far, because now, again, as a concept, everything's very vague. But generally, my experience being a developer my past life, that's the process. So the next phase is where we're going to get a lot of the answers that we've been asking all along, so...
The plans will be on the website for review, and there will be a public hearing again as progress is made, or if it stops along the way.
Right. The whole process of the public hearing will be repeated again for the new, for the new plan, if the new plan is developed. So the planning board will be having another, obviously, public, you know, public hearing as well as the Town Board.
So there's no shovel on the ground in the next weeks, or?
No. No, no, no. No. I mean, this, this phase, if it's done for it, the, the other, the new phase of development allows the engineering to go forward, which a lot of these answers are going to come from that, that development work, you know, that engineering work, to give you detailed answers. Again, there's a lot of things that we haven't been able to answer because of the phase that we're in right now is conceptual, and engineering to do this move forward with the more detailed work until the next phase of design continues.
Great responsibility falls on your shoulders to make sure that all the comments are considered along the way, and what can be infused into the plan or set aside, and then a public hearing at some point.
Right. I believe that the, that the planning board, there's a lot of, the professionals on their planning board, and that we really honed in on this development process and the review process, and kind of got it down to exactly, you know, documenting things properly, itemizing things properly, so that everything that comes from our board, you know, is available in a written form and well documented, so...
Does. So getting back to what we need to do is name the town as the lead agency and...
With the secret.
Correct. The secret.
So moved to declare the town Lewiston Lead Agents in regards to the secret for this PUD amendment.
Second. Motion second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. No. Opposed.
I have a discussion on this. One of the votes, I can open it up for discussion. You said we have three different?
Yes.
Okay. That'll be my opinion.
Next, secret portions two and three have been filled out. I would ask... I would ask the board to give a negative deck with regard to those. They have been reviewed by our county engineer.
Any comment, Bob?
Yes, we, I have prepared part two and three of a long environmental assessment form. It's our recommendation, based on that information provided in part one, that a negative declaration will be our recommendation. Then the second part of that would be if the board were to consider approving or acting on the concept plan as it's presented, that we would recommend a traffic study be done by phase in order to determine impacts on the Bronson Drive. For example, the overall buildout, okay, includes that second access on Bronson and on Upper Mountain, okay? The trip generation study that was done addressed the full buildout of all the phases, which included Upper Mountain, okay? And that may be true, however, the concerns during the phasing and during the construction is where I think we'd like to take a closer look, okay? So phase one comes on on Bronson, phase two also out on Bronson, okay? There's no phase three yet, so there's no Upper Mountain connection. It's at that condition that I want to take a look at the traffic impacts at that point, because at that point...
Prior to Upper Mountain?
Prior, or at the conclusion of phase, basically phase one and then phase two, because what could become, one or two things are going to happen. Phase one and two are built, and traffic is dumped on on Bronson, and there's no issue. Or there is, which ultimately could result in the connection on Bronson being done in phase two instead of phase three.
You mean Upper Mountain?
I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, yes, correct me, I'm sorry, yes, Upper Mountain.
Because I think the anticipation is that there's going to be an impact on Bronson, what, in phase one? You know, it's saying, that's the anticipation, is whether they could have the truck traffic or...
Well, the other, the aspect of the truck traffic during construction, okay, I think that might come out in the detailed plan phase, and that's something that we could discuss with the developer, to have a haul road and a construction access road off of Upper Mountain, not off of Bronson.
That's a possibility now.
I believe it would be, yes.
Without it being an actual drivable road for...
Well, they could construct, they can construct the haul road.
Okay.
If, you know, if there was one access road, they would have to, you know, clear it, put some stone down, and then what they, what I would suggest they do is put the stone down where the road would ultimately go, so therefore that the stone bedding is right there, they just use that without paving it, that access the site during construction of phase one and phase two. That's a discussion I've not had yet, but that's certainly something that we could discuss in the detail of phasing.
Thank you.
Sure.
So right now, we need a motion for...
To declare the negative...
Negative, add secret one, two.
Correct.
So... We have a motion and a second. Second for discussion. Second, and with discussion? Do you want to... Yeah, absolutely.
Well, not on the negative deck.
Negative, okay, okay, well, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Are we clear on the motion as to what has to be done? The secret has to be depleted?
Oh, it's done.
That's done.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay.
And then one final resolution for the voters, that would be a resolution to have Mr. Roderick sign secret two.
Motion to direct the supervisor to sign.
This is from the PUD? With, this is what the traffic studies, that's when you approve or consider approving the...
Correct.
The concept. Okay.
Second from the secret.
Okay. So what's this motion we need now?
Decided, secret.
Move to direct the supervisor to sign the secret agreement for the amended PUD.
We have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
No, a second. All in favor?
Question, and I get that.
Yeah, yeah, no. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Yes.
Okay. And then now, we would need a motion to approve the concept plan.
You would need, what I believe, Mr. Beck, you can introduce the local law, then...
What I thought originally, I thought this was originally the squaring the old concept with the new concept, and then we're going to vote on it in the second, I thought. I didn't realize that this was one... One in the same. One in the same with voting the concept, so I'd like to move it for discussion. We need a motion and a second, now we can move it to discussion. I can, I can move it for discussion, though, can I? So move for discussion. Go ahead. Second for discussion. All in favor of discussion?
Aye.
So Mr. Morell, he may some comments?
I was at the planning board when the planning board approved a motion, recommended approval of the concept plan. It was made by Lily, second by Tax Act. Depending on the traffic study being done, and the concept plan follows the purpose of the PUD. Now, you can read that however you want to read it. The way I'm reading it, because I already had this discussion with a few of the attorneys here from the town, I read it that the traffic study should have been done first. And then here, in the minutes, Mr. Villardo stated, who lives on 5216 paddock lane, if you do a traffic study, that include vital path lane. Mr. Conrad replied, the whole area. So then I'm told that the traffic study was done, and I'm reading, and this is where the confusion's coming in. I'm going to read a little bit of the traffic study here. The annual average daily traffic on Upper Mountain Road between New York Route 265 and Tuscorian Reservation was 8,861 vehicles per day in 2011, according to the most recent available New York State DOT data. The proposed development is expected to add approximately 1,300 vehicles per day, given the 2011 traffic study on Upper Mountain Road. And then a potential impact on Bronson. Based upon the proposed site layout and internal roadway configuration shown on the planned unit development plan, it is anticipated that approximately 24 of 100 proposed single-family home units will use Bronson to access Upper Mountain Road. The remaining 76 homes, as well as all the townhouses, are expected to use the new weight roadway connection to access Upper Mountain Road. That's what I wanted to touch base on. So a traffic study was never done, this is just, I don't know what you would even call this, a generation letter, a trip generation letter, they're calling it, Upper Mountain Road, PUD. So there was no traffic study done. And I asked a few other questions. Now, I'm told if this PUD doesn't get approved, we get sued, but we have attorneys for that. We should stand up, and we shouldn't just approve every PUD that comes before us. And also, hold on, I got papers all over here everywhere. I was wondering what the reasoning was for the town board if that was the case. The criteria review of recommendations, it's in the Houston Town Code. And considering and acting upon a site plan review and approvals, the town board shall consider the public health, safety, welfare, comfort, and convenience of the public in general, the resonance of the proposed development, and the resonance of the immediate surrounding area. The town board may prescribe such appropriate conditions and safeguards as may be required in order that the results of its actions, to maximize the extent possible, furthering the following. And it also states in the Houston Code, all proposed lots should be solely out of such size as to be in harmony with the development pattern of the neighboring properties. Well, I'm not against the building, no problem. You put Chacoa, you put Oak Run there, you wouldn't have a road, but this is, I asked a few things to be done. I asked for financing information, nothing was turned in to the town clerk or Mr. Masters. I never saw a market study. I asked for four lots to be removed to increase the density of the project. I was told no. There was no guarantee of an X, I asked for a guarantee at the last meeting. There was no guarantee on an X as opposed to Upper Mountain Road. And we have developments here. Saddleburg was never finished. Big Vista, Little Vista's not finished. Front Shining, one house in a year, they were predicted three to four homes. Country Club Trail, never took off. River Walk, took years to finally settle. Thank God the developers took their brains and finally got the road open, and is now starting to finish that. And it took the town thousands of dollars and drainage to get straightened out. So this is the reason I have a note on this right now, and that's where I want to leave it at.
Bill, can you comment on the traffic study issue?
The intent of what the planning board asked for was a full traffic study covering the whole area, and I wasn't satisfied with the trip generation letter. I hope this, the board, obviously, the planning board was, but that was a, that was a...
Can you repeat that again? I don't think it's on.
Oh, wrong way.
Light went off in the back of the, there you go.
Sounds much closer.
There you go.
Okay. The planning board did ask for a full traffic study covering the whole area, that was the intent, and that's why we made a contingent upon our approval to have that traffic study. Obviously, we did the approval, in the hope of trying to move it forward and not burdening the thing, hold it down, with the promise that we would have a traffic study, and the developer said that they would do that. So I think, I'm kind of getting chirped around here a little bit with the idea of just having these trip generation letters, so with that, I agree with Mr. Morell. I think some of the things that may be a little confusing is, Mr. Morell, I'm not sure what part of the Town Code you're reading, whether you're reading that with the subdivision law, whether you're reading out the PUD. They're quite a bit different.
Well, I got the PUD here. It's on 360-125, the Houston Code. And it says the PUD is compatible with existing development surrounding area and is not unduly burdened existing town infrastructure or services, and the developer has sufficient financing capabilities to complete the project as presented.
Right. A lot, the way that's looked at very often is the fact that you have residential against residential, you only have business running up against residential. The size of the lots and things, I mean, that's very subjective, so that's up to the town board to see that one way or the other, you know. The planning board will do whatever the town board wants us to do as far as reviewing that. But as far as the traffic study is concerned, we did ask for a full traffic study.
Did you say that the planning board afterwards, though, said that the trip study, or the trip letter was good enough and not to hold it down?
No, we did not say, because it didn't come back before us after that. We made the recommendation to approve the concept plan so we can move forward with the engineering, which was the idea, to get all of these answers that we've been looking for, which I mentioned before. But the traffic study, again, is not what a traffic study is typically, or what we had asked for from the planning board.
You know, one other thing I want to comment, I did go out on Bronson and measure midway, actually, there was a resident back there at Fulton, I know the gentleman, Mr. Bullianni, at Fulton's house, and measured from the white line, from the road to where the road ends in the gravel and this grass, there's two feet, and then you got your mailboxes sticking out. So if a kid's riding his bike or mom's, there's not a lot of room there. Them cars are going 40, 50 miles an hour, and if that secondary road doesn't get put in, all the traffic's going to be on Bronson. There's still three road entrances from Country Club Trail, if it ever takes off again, that would also come on to Bronson. So you've got about eight road, eight, where you egresses, you want to come in and out of Bronson if they all come to fruition. So that's where I want to just leave it at, and that's where we got to go on.
And regards to the traffic study, the next phase would include extensive traffic studies by phase, correct, one, two, and three, that would be a lot, excuse me, which would be more detailed in an actual traffic study, which the planning board required, correct?
That's correct. Mr. Morell is correct that the letter is a trip generation report, it's not a traffic study, it is an attempt to, in this particular case, verify that one is not needed, okay? That's what's been submitted, okay? And I would agree with Mr. Conrad that the way that the PUD law is written, okay, and it's in accordance with the Town Code, that a traffic study comes at the detailed design phase, okay? Right now, we're just at the concept phase. So what I would suggest the board consider, it's a motion, would be to recommend a detailed traffic study per phase in accordance with the Town Code.
By an independent reputable firm to do such?
Well...
It won't be us, it won't be the builder, it would be an independent.
That is totally up to the board. Absent that, it would be by the builder. The builder would hire an independent firm and pay for it. That's how it would normally be done, as we sit here.
But it's an independent firm.
Right, hired, in most cases, typically by the developer. The other thing to consider would be having a construction access of Upper Mountain.
And again, that would be at, not at this phase, it would be at the detailed plan.
That's my opinion, yes.
Okay.
I would certainly want that to be part of any development moving forward, just my opinion.
That is part of the PUD code, it is required, we're just kind of adding, and speaking of Mr. Lanning, there's kind of adding one thing where it has to be for each detailed phase.
No, no, I was talking about the access on Upper Mountain Road.
Construction road.
As far as gravel.
Construction road.
Bill, am I correct that that could be, if the project moves forward, that could be a stipulation in the next approval?
From the planning board, absolutely.
To have the Upper Mountain Road access included right from the get-go.
Yes.
Either as a construction road or a full utilization road.
Well, it'd be a construction road at first, it would make sense to, you know, as was mentioned earlier, just put the gravel down where the road is going to be if it goes in.
Okay. What I'd be looking forward to...
Go ahead, Tim, I'll try. You just want to clarify that, because part of this bill was a phasing plan?
Right.
And in that phasing plan, they say when that Upper Road, Upper Mountain Road access, in the phasing plan, they say when Upper Mountain Access Road is going to come into play, so if you're going to vary from that, you might want to address that in your motion, because you don't want to approve the concept plan in the phasing plan as submitted, and then all of a sudden, at the next plan, come into a big shooting match, saying you approved the phasing plan, and want them to do it then, now you're talking like you have to, I'm just...
So you're saying it can't be amended, it can't be changed at the detailed plan?
Well, I don't know if I'm not an attorney, I'll just, I'd fall off the cliff, so...
You want him cornered, is what they say.
Right, so, okay.
So the Upper Mountain Impact, including the phasing of the access road?
Any other questions? Okay. Any other questions?
Because the impact is...
So now we need, which would be the third, or fourth aspect, would be the local law.
And whatever stipulations you would require.
That's where they would go on top of this local law, correct? Any stipulations?
Yes.
Okay.
You can do that.
Can I get a motion for the local law?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Take your time. So would it be subject to, a construction road be put in off of Upper Mountain Road, or would it be? I just don't know how to make that a contingency of this particular law.
You can put it, contingent upon...
Would I be amending the conceptual plan? Would I be amending the conceptual plan?
No, not really, because it may not be a permanent road, it's just a condition of the construction.
Can you hear that?
I would simply say, the three parts of the law, the contingent upon the construction of road being built and utilized, and I would say in phase two, because it's backed that way, but it's up to the pleasure of the board, whether they want to start with, right, with phase one or not.
I'm concerned with there being no shoulder on that road. I'm concerned with there being no shoulder on the road. So, okay, so what you want to do is amend this motion, okay, to include...
A construction road off of Upper Mountain Road.
Yes. Okay.
During the first phase.
During the first phase.
On the very stuff.
From... From Phase One. And then also a traffic study done concurrent with each phase.
Yes.
Is what Mr. Lanning and the town engineer's recommendation is. Which isn't in this, the way it's written, correct?
No, that's right. We're making conditions.
Okay.
That's already in the PUD law, the traffic studies.
Traffic studies, but we're going to add them as phases.
Adding to each detailed phase, correct?
At each phase. So...
But my whole argument was that in writing the motion from the planning board, that's a traffic study. It should have been done. We put a concept plan. Am I reading this wrong? Correct me if I'm reading it wrong. And that's my only focus.
Hold on a second. Okay, can't everybody just yell at each moment?
The PUD law states there has to be a traffic study done.
I understand that.
Okay. So we're kind of tweaking that a little bit to go with this law, saying that there has to be a traffic study done for each phase. So there will be three traffic studies. Reconsidered one. There will be three done now.
I understand that. I'm just reading the motion that was made by the planning board. And that's the way I'm reading it. It was supposed to have been done.
The construction road is going to be put in for the Phase One?
Correct.
Okay. Which will eliminate traffic on Bronson.
Correct. And the traffic structure.
Would go through.
Right. The traffic would go through Upper Mountain.
So theoretically, in my mind, again, and Rob's point is taken. I mean, Rob's point is taken very strongly by me. You know, our alternative is to send it back to the planning board, have them come back and do the same thing. You know what I'm saying? If we send it back to the planning board and they bring it back to us to do the same thing that we would otherwise... I want to... I mean, I don't want personally to have any injury or accident on our shoulders. So if this motion includes taking all significant traffic from Bronson Drive and putting it onto Upper Mountain Road until the first house is built and someone is moving in, that resolves that issue for me. And again, I guess my point is if we send it back to the planning board, the planning board is going to request a full traffic study. Or are they going to just kick it back to us because the writing is on the wall? I guess I just don't want... I don't want to do an exercise of futility here.
I think the batteries are dead. Just process-wise, I don't... I'm not sure that it could... Because the planning board has approved it, and the planning board's the recommending body only.
I understand.
Okay? Decision lies with the town board. So... But legally, I don't know that it can... Since the planning board has already approved it with conditions, then it can actually come back to the planning board again without just getting kicked back.
It's going to come back to us. In probably the same form.
Right. But I would... My opinion, please, you know, counsel, please step in and correct me if I'm wrong. But I just don't believe that once it's approved, it can come back just to add more stuff on.
It's not correct. You're not locked in. You can amend it. You are the final body. They are the recommending body.
Right.
Okay? If there are conditions that this town board wants to put upon it...
We'll put them on.
You can put it on.
Above and beyond the planning.
Correct.
Okay. So as we sit right now, there would be construction of a road being built and utilized off of Upper Mountain Road for construction.
Yes.
Okay?
Beginning with Phase One.
Yes. Thank you. Off of Upper Mountain. Beginning with Phase One. And then the second would be a traffic study at each phase. Each phase. At each phase of development. At each detailed phase of development. Okay. Now, Bill, would that satisfy the planning board? Do you know, with the requirement of the planning board as far as having a traffic study?
The intent.
The intent of it.
Yes. I mean, the whole idea is we were trying to get the ball rolling with the traffic study so that it could move forward. And we were trying to meet the timeframes, you know, set forth by town law or state law in the review process. So that was the idea of trying to... We were okay with the concept plan. But a lot of the issue came up was traffic, traffic, traffic. So we were trying to fit that hammered out before we got too far along in the process. But being at the concept plan is a phase where there's still some flexibility before you move forward with any kind of a final plan. Just because a concept plan gets approved, doesn't mean the final plan's going to be approved ever.
Right.
So there's a lot of work still to be done in that next phase should the board decide to approve the concept plan.
Okay. Can I get a motion then? Does it answer everybody's questions?
Well, we still didn't talk about the financing information. Was anything sent into the town?
I signed a letter from first, from our bank, Northwest Savings.
To who?
To the board.
Yeah. Yeah.
I never received it.
I received one. I believe the town clerk. Okay. And I believe the town clerk received that. Okay, so I did see that. I can go... If you want to take a quick minute, I can give you a copy of it.
It's a requirement of a town code, so if it was submitted and you've seen it?
Yes.
Yes, from the bank.
So basically then, I would need a motion to... for the local law with those amendments.
It makes it very clear in the new amendments.
Here's... Who's that? Who do approve the local law with the additions of construction of a road being built and utilized off of Upper Mountain Road beginning in Phase One for construction? And then a traffic study be conducted at each detailed phase.
Okay. You want the whole local law?
No, as written with that addition. Okay. So we have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
So move.
Did you get that, Carol?
I would like to thank everybody for their participation in this matter, too. I mean, it was not done overnight or rushed through. And everybody took great concern in trying to get this done properly, so... Moving forward, the abstract. Counselwoman Soreto.
I move to approve the regular abstract of claims number 308423325 and recommend a payment in the amount of $254,226.74 plus a post audit of $22,664.41.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any approval of the minutes?
There is a mistake on the minutes. There was an account number that was given as 8001.
Which minutes? Which one?
This is the minutes for the board minute meeting, 10/23/17.
Okay.
We did the building contractual was... Said that's where it was going, which was 80016200400. It should have been capitalizable expenses, so it should have been home to the group. And I need to have that corrected.
Okay. Make a motion to correct that error or approve with that modification. Okay. So go ahead. Make a motion to approve the October 12, 2017...
No.
Oh, sorry. October 23, 2017. Public hearing, regular town board meeting minutes with that addition. With a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Two other motions for the 12th. For the 10/12. Move to approve the special emergency meeting and public hearing work session of October 12, 2017.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One more statement. We have the department had concerns. Chief Privet?
Nothing.
Tim Masters, building?
Nothing.
Bob Lanning, anything more?
No.
Jeff Ritter? Mike Townsend?
Just wanted to inform the board that the 817 circle is... The fire area was installed. And also on Miles City Road, a new regulator was installed, and a fresh regulator.
Okay. Was that completed?
Yes, completed.
Okay. Dave Train?
No, nothing.
Bernie Rotella?
Yep.
Come on to the microphone.
Two things real quick. We're starting the New York State Archives grant for the building inspector. That's 100% grant funded. We'll match on that. We started that. And then we're going to start working on the dog park. We're starting to collect the information or the dog shelter.
Okay.
That's all I got for you.
Okay. Mike Dacio is not here?
I mean, you can't do what you'd like. Bernie Rotella, when you go to Porter tonight, and if they're dealing with the same issue with the dog shelter, please consider shared services if it can be either on our property or their property.
I'll talk to the supervisor.
We're just open to discussion.
I'll bring that information on Wednesday.
Okay, thank you. See you Wednesday. Bill Conrad, Deputy Supervisor, anything more?
Nothing, sir.
Okay. Finance, Marty.
Okay. Fuck order. This isn't working, so I apologize. We have the invoice that we received that is to Safe Life fulfillment. It's on an insurance claim, but we need to... We've been reimbursed, but we need to pay it. We've gone back and forth because we've been trying to get the taxes off of it. But because of that, it's getting too old. So I just need you to authorize us to pay that with the next post audit. It's for $291.89 to Safe Life fulfillment.
So move. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. As we're approaching the year end and we're doing analysis, we've got quite a few budget adjustments. The first ones I have sent to you in an email. The highway department needs to reclass $100 from the town garage to traffic control. This is just covering the materials. We're just a little over the budget amount, so we want to reclass that. You do have all of the adjustments in front of you. We are now utilizing the 2650 account for the sale of scrap, which was with your approval. But the budget was in the miscellaneous amount, so we're moving those dollars over. That's just correcting the budget amount. With the... Having started on SS1, we have... We've separated out gas and electric from contractual. We need to reclass another $16,000. Again, this is just tweaking within the department. And the highway department needs to transfer $10,000 from their general repairs to their machinery contractual because of tires and such that they purchased. They just need to do that to finish out the year. And as we're doing these, we are trying to foresee, you know, what we're going to need through the end of the year. We're trying to eliminate a lot of the year and do it and move that up and doing it as we go forward. We've been doing that all year. So these adjustments I sent to you, I believe, on October 9. And so that's the first group that needs to be approved.
November 9?
November 9. October, November 9.
Make a motion to approve the November 9 amendments memorialized in the email from Ms. Blazek in her email, November 9, 2017, on the 12/12 email.
Okay.
Hold on. We have a motion. Are you second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So move.
Hello?
Yeah, does it work?
Yeah.
I can't tell.
Okay. The second group I left on your desk. If anybody wants them, we've got them available for them. I can copy them for them. These are just reviewing the general ledger and kind of tweaking accounts. Because the dog control officer has been off. We've been... Had to use out of department a little bit. So we are transferring $500 from the dog control officer to the out of department personal services. With the senior center, they had the mechanic from the highway come. So again, we're just transferring from the senior center personnel $100 to the out of department. There's a minor reclass to the PIP engineering of 350 that's just coming out of the engineering. So again, this is just within the department. There's a minor reclass for the outside town equipment of $100 coming out of vehicle insurance. This is... This tweak is... We're actually going to get the money back. We're getting it refunded. But I need the money in there to pay the invoice. So that's why... Because it would put it over budget. There is also a transfer to the capital project from the serial bond principal of $179,000. This one is for the payment of the highway ban. And this, again, is just an interdepartmental because the auditors had changed the account they wanted it to come out of. So there's a negative in one account, a positive in the other. We're just putting it into the right account. There... The following 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 adjustments are basically because of unemployment claim that came through. And so we're just doing reclasses in other accounts to cover that unemployment because we haven't anticipated that for the budget. So the funds are all there. This is just reclassifying it within those funds. And then there's a $30 adjustment from the water admin contractual going into insurance because the insurance now, because we found a new insurance company, we get charged when they add a new vehicle, so there was $30. So it was in the negative, and we need to get that positive. So that is this group of adjustments that I sent to you that we need to approve.
Move to approve the budget revisions sent us by Marty Blazek dated November 13, 2017 at 11:17:28 a.m.
That's when it was run. I was on the dial since I did 17 to you.
Thank you.
And then there's just...
Hold on. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
You've got to act a little quicker.
Okay. And then it's the last one is the last one I found that we need to do. And again, this is within the A fund, just moving $400 from insurance to the company machine, coffee machine lease payment, where we had just underestimated something. And this is, again, just a tweaking of this.
So move. A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And that's those. I also want to make the board aware of, we've had two emergencies, or not emergencies, well, one of them's an emergency, repairs on the furnace. We don't have the final invoice yet, so I could request the specific dollars. It's going to be somewhere between $1,000 and $1,500. We would like to have the board's permission to go ahead and pay that invoice when it comes in. And so what we need to do is move money from the contingency to the building contractual. If you want to, we can wait till we get the actual invoice. But we could keep moving stuff forward if you went ahead and approved based on the actual... You know, to be between $1,000 and $1,500 based on that actual invoice when it comes through to make that adjustment. I don't know if we can do that enough.
It's for the furnace, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and it's $900. You said $1,500.
Well, but there's another... It's $900 that we know of at this point. But they've got another switch they're going in, and we haven't gotten the last bill. That's why I think it's going to be about $1,000 to $1,500 when it finally comes in.
We'll pay another in two weeks, so...
Marty, if I subject, if it does come in by the end of the year, we should encumber the money.
Oh, yeah. I mean, this has to be encumbered. It's got to be in before that. And then the other thing that we have coming up that you need to be aware of that we're going to have to transfer money from the contingency. And that's why I'm really bringing it up, because this money does have to come out of contingency to pay for these things, is we do have equipment that has to be purchased by the police department for... To replace equipment that's being kept by court security officers that will... We're recommending that come out of the contingency. I know that the invoice is for twelve twenty-nine fifty-eight, but there might be shipping on top of that, which I don't know about. But I want to mention it so that if something comes up between now and when we talk about it, you can't spend that contingency money. I need that in your heads.
So you need no action on those two?
No, we can do those when the invoice actually comes in. And that was it.